For your viewing pleasure, this broadcast of the Municipal Council Meeting of Alpena is made possible by the funding provided by the City of Alpena. Thank you for your generosity.
All right, good evening and welcome to the Alpena City Council Meeting of July 15, 2019. Call it order, please.
Hoss.
Johnson.
Here.
Nielsen.
Here.
Noack.
Here.
And Walagora.
Here.
Please rise to the plate.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Any modifications to the agenda this evening? Approval of the minutes for regular and closed sessions of July 1, 2019? Any issues or changes? Any citizens appearing before council on agenda and non-agenda items are allowed five minutes each to address your concerns. It's the only time during tonight's council meeting that you're allowed to address council with the exception of the public hearing for the determination of necessity for the Merchant Street, Miller Street project that is later in the agenda. And just a point of clarification that we do have a presentation by Brandon Hoel and a presentation by our public safety later in the agenda. So anyone other than those two people, if you'd like to address council or anyone on a non-agenda item, please do so. And please state your name and your address for our records.
My name is Karen O'Wicki Campbell. My address is 4218 Monahin Pond Road, Alpena, Michigan. And I'm the personal health director for District Health Department Number Four. I am here in support of the amendment to the city ordinance to reflect the public health code that allows health departments to provide clean syringes to those at risk for spreading disease and infections. The state of Michigan supports the local health departments in creating prevention programs locally that mirror programs that have been successful not only nationally but also in Michigan. And the CDC investigators indicated that 220 counties in the United States are at risk of HIV and hepatitis C outbreaks related to HIV drug use and the misuse of opioids. The results were that three of our District Health Department Number Four's counties were among those 220. In 2014, a situation occurred in Scott County, Indiana, where HIV infections skyrocketed overnight, and it had a lot of states talking and comparing themselves to the vulnerability of that county. Scott County has so much rural communities up north. The population there is about 25,000 with no more than five new cases of HIV infections annually. And in 2014 and 2015, one individual changed that, creating over 270 new HIV infections within a few short months. Scott County is now put on the map for all of us to learn from. Our concern is that there are many transient individuals coming to visit our counties from all over. We never know what infectious disease follow. We have to do better than Scott County. We have to protect our residents. Syringe service programs allow IV drug users a place to seek care. Local health departments are nonjudgmental, empathetic, trained nurses that can provide care to individuals that are not getting it elsewhere. Most of the time, these individuals are not going to providers asking for help or asking to get tested for disease. These programs offer a safe place to talk, counseling on drug use, opportunity to be tested for HIV, hepatitis C, syphilis, chlamydia, and gonorrhea, along with providing vaccinations such as hepatitis A and B, HPV, tetanus, and influenza. Additionally, we build relationships to encourage treatment and recovery. Individuals will be given naloxone kits to prevent untimely deaths from drugs that are laced with other substances. Those using syringes for drug use will have a place to bring their dirty needles, keeping them away from first responders, police officers, waste disposal personnel, families and children, and reducing the risk of accidental needle sticks. Drug use in our community is not going away. Our community must focus on taking care of all of the citizens in our counties. It is important that we create healthy communities, places that others want to move to raise their families. All service personnel, councils, commissioners, clergy, courts, physicians, local health departments need to work together compassionately and empathetically to create these healthy communities. Working against one another and treating other entities as if they're the outsider does not create healthy environments. Take for instance when Dr. Jason Beatty started in our community. He should have had more favorably assistance in getting his Freedom Clinic started. And now that we've built a relationship with him, we will also help him take care of the individuals that he seeks. He meets the clients where they are instead of forcing the clients to comply with the rules and regulations that everybody else does. There's a lot to learn from him, and I'm happy to partner with Dr. Beatty in the Freedom Clinic to assist in making our communities healthier. It should never feel like it's our business when it comes to building the healthy communities that everyone should have privileges to. Syringe service programs do not increase drug use. Without taking action to provide this prevention program, the cost of taxpayers may increase significantly when individuals are incarcerated and the care for hepatitis C or HIV falls to the county. The medications for these diseases are extremely expensive, in the thousands of dollars. Individuals that become incarcerated lose their state-funded insurance and become covered by the county dollars. How would this affect the jail's budget if not addressed proactively? Again, I'm asking that the city ordinance be amended to include District Health Department Number Four to provide this prevention program for the residents of our community. In order to truly serve our population of people, it would be most beneficial to provide these services in our current building. This way, we can assure that every task can be completed and every vaccine needed to be given, and there is a safe, nonjudgmental office to have services in. We ask that the clients we serve not be followed or bullied as they seek care, counseling, and the desire to do the right thing. People do not intentionally want to be ill or spread disease, but by closing the door on them, you are saying that they don't matter. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm David Schindler, MD, 6513 US 23 South Alpena Township. I'm going to sort of echo, except I'm going to now cut short some of the things she just said. So as a family physician, I'm over at Alpena Health Center, which, as you know, is federally qualified healthcare facility. And coming over here from Detroit area, I see a lot more narcotics than I'm used to. I do see a lot more sexually transmitted diseases. The population that she was talking about, how they don't seek treatment, is probably true. The IV drug users that I see are generally ones that are actually now in treatment, getting better. But it's the other ones that are out there that I only see periodically after they've gotten in trouble in the ER. By reducing down the amount of burden in this community, so according to the studies that they were showing, that one in five people who participate in the syringe program actually seek treatment. It's somewhere around one in three, I believe, in that group will actually quit doing drugs. That's actually huge. The amount of HIV, as she had mentioned, I'm not going to override that, but the amount of Hep C is also huge. The stats that I saw was 97 new cases from 2013 to 2018 in Alpena County. If this reduces it by 50%, like the studies show, that's actually a lot of people that would really have benefit. And those aren't just people who were using IV drugs. There are also people who have had sex with somebody who's used drugs. So the disease burden, you know, is huge. The cost is huge. I think I calculated something like $2.1 million that would have been saved over that five years if that had been implemented then, so you would have cut down that many people because the cost of Hep C treatment is huge. Needle sticks is another thing. Needles are left around. I had a patient last Tuesday, new patient to me, say that his little girl stepped on a needle, and so she's being tested to make sure she doesn't get any of these diseases. So again, to protect the community, I think this is actually huge. I think that's pretty much it. I'm going to try not to repeat the stuff she did. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, David.
Hi, my name is Jessica, 12792 Hibner Road out in LaShine. I am the harm reduction nurse from District Health Department Number Four. I've come to speak to you today in support of the syringe service program known as the Prevention Project. One goal of this program is to prevent all disease associated with drug use. We've been very focused on the risk of disease outbreak in our area for Hep C and HIV due to our infection rates and lack of treatment resources, but there are other infections associated with IV drug use. After reaching out to the state, I've come across some concerning data for our Alpena County area. In fact, Alpena County is ranked 14th out of all Michigan counties for hospital admissions of infections related to injection drug use. Some of these include endocarditis or infection of the heart, sepsis or infection of the bloodstream, osteomyelitis, abscess, cellulitis, flibitis, septic pulmonary embolism, and tetanus. Unfortunately, some of these infections can be fatal, and treatment costs quickly add up when looking at admissions, length of stay, antibiotics, and care after discharge. It is likely that the residents of Alpena County assist in covering these costs. Sadly, we find that the national opioid crisis has been impacting the lives of individuals in our area. In 2017, there were enough narcotic prescriptions given out to provide every Alpena County resident 228 vicodin. I would like to point out that the CDC has identified that addiction to prescription opiates puts an individual 40 times more likely to be involved with heroin addiction. With this information, it comes at no surprise that there were 41 heroin-related treatment admissions in Alpena County in 2018. Alone, this program keeps all of its community members safe. This program recognizes that these individuals suffering from addiction are Alpena residents, and we will provide them the opportunity to reduce harm. Just as condoms reduce sexually transmitted infections, and seat belts reduce injury and accidents, sterile syringes reduce infections and prevent harm to the community as a whole. The goal of this program is to not only prevent disease, but it is also to prevent stigma. Stigma is just one barrier that prohibits an individual with an addiction to seek help. This syringe service program will offer a nonjudgmental environment. It takes courage for these clients to openly admit to being an injection drug user. As these clients build a trusting relationship with us, they will know that they have a safe place to bring their used syringes and get medical care. Not only will they get medical care, but they will also be linked to other resources for things like food, clothing, and shelter. At this point in time, these individuals have no place to take their used syringes. Why keep syringes on them at the risk of getting in trouble with the law? It's no wonder we are seeing them dispose of them properly. These people who want to do the right thing, they want to do the right thing, we just have to give them the opportunity to. There is plenty of data to support that injection drug users who utilize these services not only bring in their own dirty syringes, but they also bring in the ones of those who are not yet comfortable with accessing their syringe service program. Six months ago, I began on a journey of understanding what a syringe service or a syringe exchange was. As a nurse, the idea of handing out syringes to those who suffer from addiction was baffling to me. After I educated myself on what the program provides and how it benefits the clients and community it serves, I was able to recognize its true value. Just when I thought I fully understood this program, I got to witness syringe service programs in action. It changed my perception of how these programs function. I quickly realized that my original thoughts were wrong. Not only did experiencing these programs change my mind, but it changed my heart. I look forward to the day that we no longer need to provide preventative resources to stop the spread of disease in injection drug users. However, as we continue on during this opioid crisis, we know that at this time, evidence shows that syringe service programs are best practice in the prevention of disease, and individuals are five times more likely to seek treatment. They don't seek treatment because they receive sterile needles. They seek treatment because they realize that there are people out there who want to help them and who do not judge them during their current circumstances. Just as the CDC, World Health Organization, and the State of Michigan support syringe service programs, District Health Department Number Four supports using the Prevention Project to prevent disease and get these people the help they need. It's about reducing any harm that we possibly can so that we can keep Alpena and its residents safe. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else this evening?
I'm Joshua Meyerson. Dr. Meyerson, I'm the medical director of the Health Department. My address is 710 East Lake Street in Petoskey. And I wasn't going to speak, but I think, just looking at the agenda, I'm not going to get into the facts or anything. I just, one thing, I guess I don't quite understand what you'll see in people these days. People love a point and counterpoint. They like to have a, like there's a battle, you know? In the media, there's always got to be an us and a them, and that's not what this is about whatsoever here. You may be hearing different sides, but I don't understand that because, you know, we're all on the same team here. And the team is, we want to make this a place that's safe for everyone in our community to live, reside, and work, and play. And public safety has a very important job, and I want them to do their job, and I want them to have the tools to do their job. And public health also has an important job to do, and you all, everyone in this room, pays us to do our job. And one of our jobs is to prevent the outbreaks of serious, dangerous, communicable diseases. And that's what we're trying to do here. And it's not really anything out of the ordinary. It's, you know, every disease has different ways of being transmitted, and we have to look at what do we need to do to prevent these outbreaks? And that's one of the core responsibilities of the Health Department, is to prevent outbreaks. And that's all we're trying to do here. And it's what's going on all around us as we as a society deal with this, you know, issue of people who inject drugs and the risks and harms that come from them. So that's what we're trying to do here. I don't see it as a big, you know, issue. We want to work together here because, again, we're all on the same team. We're just trying to make this the best and safest place we can to live and reside. Thank you.
Joshua.
I'm Tom Lacrosse, 80th District Court Judge and Alpena County Probate Judge. I've had drug courts for about 10 years, juvenile drug court for about seven years, and adult drug court for the last five years. And obviously, we work with severe cases that have come through the courts. Okay? That's how a person gets to them. And I agree with so many, especially the doctors who said we have to work together. Okay? It's not us, them. It's not an issue where we have absolute opposing, you know, opinions. To that end, the court is sponsoring an Addictions Crisis Conference, and everybody is invited. It's, the media is certainly invited, but the courts, the drug courts, Catholic Human Services, Dr. Beatty, Community Mental Health, the jail, Michigan Department of Corrections, probation officers, law enforcement, hunt, the hospital, private treatment providers, the faith community, Department of, Health Department Number Four, all councils and commissioners, they will get, save the date, a card shortly, within the next few weeks, say, about. And we have this conference at the A-plex. And everybody is going to, and it's for professionals, it's, I don't care if the public comes, you know, it's not for the public, it's for us, right? And we have to get together on the same page and talk about the Addictions Crisis Conference. It's not, you've heard the term opiate crisis? It's not just opiates. And it's not just HIV. It's not just, you know, infectious diseases. You know, it's a lot of issues that surround addictions to alcohol, opiates, all kinds of things. And what I have found in, I don't know, 30-some years of practice and being on the bench and all that stuff, everybody has an idea of how to approach these issues. Everybody has an agenda. They're functioning in their own silos. And they're all good, you know, good faith people, but we have to get on the same page. For instance, a lot of law enforcement don't necessarily trust the medical community and the treatment providers. Why? Because they don't know what each other does. And we're all geared toward treating and eradicating addictions. If there were no addictions at all and no heroin users, I'll bet you the infectious disease issue would greatly diminish, if not go away. You know, we have to get on the same page. We really, really do. I would simply ask, I would simply ask this council to pause in its determination until after October 19. We have a place reserved at the A-plex. We can accommodate about 150 professionals, right? And the media? Yeah? And to talk about each other and what we do and what our concerns are and what our understanding and misunderstandings about the other is. So again, we can get on the same page, and then we can come to councils unanimously and say, hey, this is what we suggest, all of us, right? And that's what we have to do. Otherwise, you're going to get, you know, opposing things and lots of consternation and debate, and we won't get to the issue. We won't get to the issues. So the only thing I'm asking is, please, to pause until after October 19, and then we can come to you with hopefully one voice and suggest this is how we should respond as a community. And I think I disagree with some of you who said that the drug crisis will never go away. We are going to fight like heck to make it go away. If we are not going to give in and say, well, it'll never go away. No, it will go away. And I know I've talked to most everybody from these different agencies, good faith people, and they have this notion that they're going to fight to make it go away, right? One officer, really good police officer, he said, you know, Judge, he said, we cannot wrest our way out of this problem. And so that's law enforcement, right? Giving indication that we have to treat our way out of this crisis. We can incarcerate all these drug users. It's a disease for gosh sakes, you know? And so, again, not to blabber, but I would merely ask you two things. One, to participate, all of you will be invited to the October 19 conference, please go, okay? And the other thing is to pause, just merely to pause before you do anything without benefit of our October 19 thing. I look forward to that conference. I look forward to that discussion. It's an all-day event. All-day, it's not an hour-long thing. It's all day, and we're getting ready. And so many communities in the nation have had these types of conferences because they see it as a crisis. Guess what? It is a crisis here. It is. And so, and we're addressing it. Bill's on our, or has been, very involved in drug court, and, you know, a lot of good people have been involved. And so, we are responding, but we have to get together and be on the same page. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Okay. Thank you very much for that. Next up on the agenda is the consent agenda. Bills to be allowed in the amount of $751,043.72. And B is the ballot for Michigan Municipal League Board of Trustees election. And will we approve the consent agenda as presented?
Second. Hoss.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Nielsen.
Yes.
Noack.
Yes.
And Walagora.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Next up, I have a couple of proclamations this evening. The first one is the Brown Trout Festival Week. Whereas the nonprofit organization known as the Michigan Brown Trout Festival has been incorporated since 1975 with a purpose to highlight the aquatic resources of the Thunder Bay area, and whereas the Michigan Brown Trout Festival is composed of numerous community support organizations and individuals who have generously given their time and efforts to make this festival a continued success, and whereas the festival draws people from around the state, Midwest, and other points in North America to enjoy the best of what Alpena and the waters of Lake Huron have to offer, and whereas the Michigan Brown Trout Festival hosts numerous activities for children and adults of all ages, including educational fishing, sport fishing, teen dances, Veterans Night, and plenty of food and live music, and whereas the Michigan Brown Trout Festival is held the third full week in July, plus the weekends at both ends out of the small boat harbor in the downtown area, this year being the 45th annual festival. And now, therefore, I, Matthew J. Walagora, by the virtue of authority vested in me as the mayor of the City of Alpena, do hereby proclaim July 19 to the 28, 2019, as Michigan Brown Trout Festival Week in Alpena, and urge all citizens to recognize and support the efforts of the volunteers who comprise the Michigan Brown Trout Festival. And Peggy is here with some other... Yeah? Some other members? Just you?
Thank you. Yep, I've got Barbara. Barbara is our secretary. She's going to do this for two years.
Well, yeah, I remember that. How long ago was that? All right, and next is the Michigan Municipal Executives Summer Workshop. Whereas the council manager system is the fastest-growing and most prevalent form of local government in the country, combining strong political leadership through elected officials and professional managerial leadership through an appointed government manager, and whereas the Michigan Municipal Executives is an association of city, village, county, and township managers and administrators whose purpose is to strengthen the quality of local government through professional management, maintain ethical standards of the profession, and provide opportunities to enhance the professional development and training of its members. And whereas to support the purpose of the MME, a winter institute and a summer workshop are conducted each year in a host community to provide educational and networking opportunities on pertinent topics and issues facing managers and communities in Michigan while showcasing the local community to its membership. And whereas the City of Alpena has been afforded the honor of hosting the 2019 MME Summer Workshop July 23 to the 26. So now, though, so now, therefore, I, Matthew J. Walagora, by the virtue of authority vested in me as the mayor of the City of Alpena, do hereby proclaim the week of July 22 through the 26, 2019, as Michigan Municipal Executives Week in the City of Alpena, and urge all area citizens to recognize the importance of professional managers and administrators to the varied communities across the state and to welcome them to our community. And Greg has been working on this for quite a while, and it's really quite something that he's gotten this on his retirement year, so to help promote the week. All right, next up is a public hearing. This is the Determination of Necessity Special Assessment Project Number 124, Merchant Street, Miller Street, to Lake Street. We'll open the public hearing and a presentation by our city manager, our city engineer, sorry, Rich Sullivan. Almost promoted you there.
The property owners fronting on Merchant Street between Miller Street and Lake Street have petitioned the City of Alpena to install curb and gutter improvements via the special assessment on this section of roadway. on this section of roadway. The engineering department has prepared an engineer's estimate for the work to be performed. Total project costs are estimated at $279,662.50, of which $50,411.85 is eligible special assessment costs. This includes the curb and gutter work, sidewalk and ramp improvements, driveway improvements, and additional street width-related costs. Per special assessment guidelines, the property owners would be responsible for 25% of these costs, or $12,602.96. With 560 feet of frontage along the street, the per-front foot cost for the property owners will be $22.51. Of the 560 lineal feet of frontage, there is 252 lineal feet, which is exempt due to corner lot credits. Thus, only 308 feet of frontage will be assessed, totaling $6,933.08.
Okay, sorry. So open up the public comment on that topic. Anyone like to come and speak to the assessment?
Yeah.
Okay. Were there any written comments received by the clerk's office?
No.
Okay. Close the public comment.
What?
What? Yes? I'm sorry.
Victor Bays from 623 Merchant Street. I've been trying to get that curb and gutter since, for 42 years now. I've been before this many councils on it and this is the furthest we got. And it's, it's all good.
All right. Thank you, Victor.
That's nice.
All right. No one else. So we had the, and correct me if I'm wrong, but I think every resident signed a favorable petition if I, if I remember correctly. Oh, yeah, right, right, right.
I believe five out of seven.
Oh, five, five, yeah, there was one that did that.
Two.
Two. One, two, three, four. Oh, I'm sorry, yeah. And so now we're at our discussion for the determination of necessity. So there's an adoption of a resolution on the table for number 2019-14, Determination of Necessity for Merchant Street from Miller Street to Lake Street.
So moved. So moved.
I was gonna say, no questions for me, sir. I don't know if there's any other discussion, but I have no questions. I think we've got everything spelled out and I think that they waited 42 years. I think this is, I think that's quite long enough. So I don't know. Mayor Protem, did you make a motion?
Yep.
I would proudly second that.
Johnson?
Yes.
Nielsen?
Yes.
Noack?
Yes.
Walagora?
Aye.
And Hoss?
Yes.
Motion carried.
All right. No report officers, no communication of petitions. So next up is unfinished business. First topic is the syringe service program. So we have a presentation by Brandon Hool. He is the Harm Reduction Analyst with the Michigan Department of Health and Human Services.
Oh, he's covering up his ass. But thank you guys for having me. Thank you for putting me on the agenda. My name is Brandon Hool. I work with the Michigan Department of Health and Human Services, Harm Reduction Analyst with the Viral Hepatitis Unit. Thank you. We have to get this open before it shuts down. Yes, I appreciate District Health Department Four asking me to be here today and again, you guys put me on the agenda, giving me a little bit of time. So what I'm gonna talk about today is basically what the state's effort in the field of harm reduction and syringe service programs is. And if I still have time, talk about my personal experience with syringe service programs. So I've got the visual representations of a lot of the data they were talking about. You know, the state of Michigan has determined that syringe service programs are a sound public health strategy, that the benefits far outweigh the risks, which to date, there have been no proven risks to the community. There's only benefits and these programs have been contested since they started up in the 80s. There's always been, there's always been a little bit of conflict over these. So they have definitely tried to find data that oppose these programs. But I've seen it through the data, through the national data. There's a lot of studies around this and also my personal experience. Because before working for the state, I worked at a syringe service program for eight years. And the way I got involved with that was that I was a client of a syringe service program. So I mean, I've seen this stuff firsthand. So that's, I mean, that's what I'm here to talk about is what my experience with these programs is. The state fully supports this. At this point, they funded 11 local health departments to initiate these programs and they've also funded four legacy programs. Prior to 2017, there were only four programs in the state and they existed completely on community donations and grant money. And the reason for that is there was actually a ban on using federal funding to fund these programs until 2017. And the thing that happened in Indiana, the outbreak in Indiana, is what really helped push them to lift the federal ban. So we've talked about the outbreak in Indiana. You know, a county that saw less than five new cases of HIV a year, all of a sudden, within two years, it's seen 102, or 237 cases, all attributed to the injection of a prescription opioid, oxymorphone, commonly known as Opana. So this was attributed to injection of a prescription opioid. And one of the things that they saw in Scott County was that this was multi-generational syringe sharing. So you had grandparents teaching grandchildren how to inject and injecting in the same house. And so what this really showed us is that 2015 was not the beginning of this epidemic, was not the beginning of the opioid crisis, that things had been breaking down in Indiana for a long time. And we, you know, this had been talked about at the beginning of the meeting that, you know, this separation of communities is really, is really what was happening there. People were out of work, they were not getting medical services, poverty level was way above the national average. I guess I took that slide out. I didn't really intend to go into that that much, but, so what we're really seeing is a kind of breakdown in the community where the community had started to, had started to separate. And, you know, this could have been, as far as the outbreak, this could have been avoided. They've run mathematical simulations on what happened in Indiana. And in two, in two separate studies, what they found is that had there been a syringe service program prior to the outbreak, it could have drastically reduced the number of HIV cases. I mean, we could have seen as little as 27 cases and instead we ended up with 237 cases. If it had been introduced after they discovered those first 10 cases, they estimated that it could have been reduced to as much, or as little as 57 cases. Yeah, so here's, here's the study that Dr. Myers was talking about. They looked at the vulnerability of other counties across the U.S. to see who else might be at risk for a similar outbreak. They identified the 220 highest-risk counties in the U.S. and 11 of them are right here in Michigan. Michigan actually had the fifth-most vulnerable counties of all the U.S. states. Three of them within the District Health Department Four area. Not sure if everybody's familiar with this stuff. So the map on the right is the counties that are at the highest risk for HIV outbreak. The county, or the map on the left is a study that our department did that actually identified counties that were high-risk for a hepatitis C outbreak, looking at those same, same risk factors. And the maps match up pretty close. The one on the left, we had more data for the UP than the federal government did, so we were able to do the UP as well. But we see similar, similar things. And HIV and hepatitis C are both spread through blood-to-blood transmission. So that's, this is, and the reason I'm talking about this is this is what the state used to make our funding decisions. We had limited resources from the CDC as far as how we were gonna fund syringe service programs, so this is kind of where we started. The highest-risk counties. And in 2017 was the first year that a syringe service program in Michigan received state funding or federal funding. We were able to fund four programs. By 2018, we funded 11 local health departments, plus for the first time since the 80s, the four existing programs that existed before there was any funding, actually received funding from the state. And their work kind of mirrors the national work. We see the same effects in the communities, just on a smaller scale because they didn't have much money for most of their existence. So at this point, we have eight, nine programs operating, but 15 with funding. Next year, there will be an additional eight across the state with funding. So that's how the state has supported these programs. Stuff that's already been gone over. And just in case I was kind of stumbling over my words, the four legacy programs were Flint, Ann Arbor, and Detroit and Grand Rapids. Harm Reduction Michigan operates in Traverse City, a couple other areas, and they never received any funding even to date. At this point, so here's how the state determined, to the CDC, made the case to the CDC that, hey, we need this money for Michigan. CDC gave us the money. And this point, this is what it looks like in Michigan as far as what the state supports. So my background is with the Grand Rapids Red Project. I live in Grand Rapids, drove up here from Grand Rapids today, which is beautiful up here. Thank you again. So Grand Rapids Red Project, I was there for eight years, working right at the syringe service program, running the syringe service program. So I've seen this firsthand and I can just, I don't know how long I have, but I can tell you some of the things that I've seen. I mean, as far as, as far as me getting involved with it, I started injecting drugs. I came from Greenville, small town northeast of Grand Rapids. I started with OxyContin back in 2001. I was a senior in high school. And I always got the message that drugs were bad. Say no to drugs. Say no. Don't do it. You're gonna get addicted. You're gonna die. You're gonna get arrested. Nobody ever told me it was okay to do drugs, but I did. What they didn't tell me is that they were gonna feel good and they were gonna help me deal with a lot of the stuff I was going through as a teenager. And eventually, they became a problem and I couldn't stop. But that was how I learned how to deal with what was happening to me. That's how I learned how to deal with my feelings. And I ended up more and more isolated from my community. I was afraid of the police because they kept taking me to jail. Still a little afraid of the police. I was afraid of medical professionals because if I ever disclosed my drug use to a medical professional, I was treated very differently. I was not treated for my immediate medical concern. I was treated like an addict. So I couldn't be honest with anybody. I was isolated from my family. And that's what happened. As I was using OxyContin, I got more and more isolated. They cut off the prescription drug supply, you know, they cracked down on doctors. And we all, me and my friends, we were all addicted to OxyContin. So what do we do? We drive down the road to Grand Rapids, which might have had something to do with me eventually moving there. But there was heroin in Grand Rapids and it was cheap. Heroin is a lot cheaper than prescriptions and I think that's exactly what you guys are seeing up here, is that there was a lot of prescribing and now we're seeing heroin treatment admissions. But nobody ever taught me to inject. And what I knew about injecting was that if you wash the needle off with water real good, hot water, that killed everything. That's, that's what I knew. My friends and I, we would get our drugs, we would go to somebody's house, and we all had a stash of syringes at our house. You'd have a bundle of syringes, you'd pull the rubber band off them, you'd pull the caps off of them, you'd see which one was the least bent, which one had the least amount of corrosion on it, and that was your syringe for the day. You didn't carry your own syringe around because you're more likely to get arrested carrying a syringe than you are drugs. Drugs are easy to hide. So that's how I learned how to inject. That's how I got hepatitis C. Because I never knew any of that and I wasn't talking to a medical professional. I wasn't able to talk to anybody. So when I moved to Grand Rapids, I walked into this program and when I walked into Red Project, I didn't know what to expect. I had heard about it. I found their business card. It was a sticker on a condom. I walked in, made sure I didn't have any needles on me, I didn't have any drugs on me. And I'm looking over my shoulder and I'm like, you know, this has gotta be a trap. These people are actually gonna give me sterile syringes. Because I had hepatitis C, I didn't want to spread it to my friends and I've got a success story about that too, but, and I didn't want the injuries that I was getting. I was getting these abscesses. I was getting sick all the time. And so I walk in and I'm like, yeah, I'm here to get some syringes for my roommate. He does a lot of drugs and I'm really concerned about him. Because that's how I knew how to interact with people. Lie to them, separate, separate. And I walked in there and they said, yeah, man, whatever you need. And it was after a couple of visits, I felt this huge weight lift off my shoulder. And I said, I can actually be honest with these people about what's happening in my life. I can actually talk about what drugs I'm doing, what my risks are, what's happening with my friends, you know? I'm using heroin. I don't want to overdose and die. What can I do about that? I tell my doctor that. Doctor's gonna say, we're doing heroin. Well, I mean, right now, treatment has about a 10% success rate if you can get in, if you can survive through the waiting list. But I told them and they said, well, we've got this drug called Maloxone, Narcan. We can train you how to respond to an overdose. You can give it to your friends. If you overdose, they can save you. If you overdose, you can save them. I could talk about what my injection practices were. Hey, I've got hepatitis C, I don't want to give it to my friends. What can I do? They said, well, do you share syringes? We try not to. Well, what about the other equipment that you use to inject with? The cookers, the cottons, the waters? Sorry, just trade, trade lingo. That stuff can have virus on it too. Oh. The guy I was living with at the time, he never ended up getting hepatitis C. We lived together, we tried our best not to share syringes. I started living with him shortly after I had walked into this program, started getting sterile syringes. He never ended up getting hepatitis C from me. My group of friends back in Greenville, we all had hepatitis C, you know, from the rubber band and pulling the syringe out and picking which one you're gonna use. So I walked into this program, that was my experience, is that I could finally be open and honest and I felt connected and I didn't have to hide. I could, they cared. They didn't care what I told them I was doing, they just wanted to help me out. And they did. They gave me enough syringes, so I was able to use a sterile syringe for every single injection. I was able to give them to my friends who were too scared to walk in there. And then every couple weeks, when I was able to get in there, I'd bring them back a big garbage can full of syringes. So Grand Rapids, we don't, we have the exemption from the ordinance. So it was perfectly legal for me to walk down the street with a garbage can full of syringes and take it back to the fuel exchange to incinerate it. I didn't have to worry about hiding them or getting rid of them or walking down the street and not having any in my pockets. But it was empowering. I saw that I could use a sterile syringe every time. I stopped getting the horrible infections in my arms. And it was, you know, I saw, like, I'd been told for so long that, no, you can't be here. We don't want you around. I stopped getting the horrible infections in my arms. And it was, you know, I saw, like, I'd been told for so long that, no, you can't be here. We don't want you around. You're going to steal stuff, or we're going to take you to jail, or we don't want you working here. So, I was really excluded from my community. Going here and seeing that I could actually positively impact my health and the health of people around me, that was amazing. It opened my eyes. You know, I can use a sterile syringe every time. That feels good. After I've been put down for so long, I can help my friends out. That feels good. I can save my friend's life. I've saved several of my friends' lives. And two years after I walked into the door to get syringes, I decided I wanted to stop using. I had opened my eyes just enough to where I checked myself into treatment for the first time ever. I had a lot of judges send me to treatment. I had a lot of family members send me to treatment, which usually I would immediately leave. I'd stay about two weeks, take a nap, and take off from treatment. But I, I wanted to go. I felt good. I was done. I wanted to go, and they supported me through treatment, the people at this syringe program. They supported me after treatment. They said, hey, why don't you come volunteer, help us out? I volunteered for two years, did HIV, hepatitis C testing, and eventually started running the program, ran the overdose prevention program, did technical assistance all over the state, and ended up working for the Health Department for six months now. But the last time I used was in 2010. And, and these harm reduction programs are, it's not syringe exchange versus recovery. It's all one spectrum. It's, it's just including anybody wherever they're at on that spectrum of substance use, keeping them tied into care, staying connected. The people they trust are the ones that they can be honest with. That's who they'll go to for HIV testing. My experience sitting at the desk at that syringe service program is that a lot of times, I knew when somebody wanted to go to treatment before their family knew, before their partner knew. I was the first one they would come to. Unfortunately, we were very understaffed, and I couldn't get everybody into the doors of detox because I just didn't have time. But eventually, I think every single one of those seven, 800 clients, at one point, asked me or said, I'm going to quit soon, or actually asked, hey, what do I do if I want to get into treatment? And, you know, people want the best for themselves. There's just barriers to them getting there. And so, there's a lot more to these programs than just handing somebody a syringe. Handing somebody a syringe is, is how you build that relationship, that trusting relationship. And people will. They will jump over hoops to improve their own community. They will bring in that trash can of syringes. They will look out for other people out there. And that's been my experience with syringe service programs. I guess I didn't really use my slideshow. I just kind of got off into my story. But they've got all the data. I can send you guys any data you ever need through the Health Department as far as communicable disease stuff, treatment admissions, overdose, that kind of stuff. So, that's all.
We may have some questions for you, Brandon. I know I have one. Why, why a syringe? Why is the state of Michigan supporting a syringe service program and not a syringe exchange program?
Sure. Just like I was sharing in my story, as far as, it, it looks really good on paper. Bring one in, get a sterile one. As far as logistically though, so when I'm injecting heroin, I'm injecting three, two, 10 times a day. If I'm injecting crack or meth, I might inject up to 30 times a day. Now, as far as getting all those syringes in to always have a sterile one, it's not, it's just not possible. People have busy lives, even without substance use. People have really busy lives. To go in every day to get those sterile syringes gets really difficult. But people will, and, and that's really best practice, is needs-based. The other thing with that is there has never been a case where somebody has been diagnosed with hepatitis C as a result of stepping on a syringe or getting poked with a discarded syringe. It's happened with law enforcement, and there's a concern in there, and with medical professionals. But really, to decrease the prevalence of these diseases in the community, that's our goal. Decrease the prevalence rather than decrease the amount of syringes. Because if less people in the community have these diseases, then there's less chance it's going to spread through the community. So, yeah, really, it's a logistical kind of thing. People aren't going to be able to keep up with the supply that they need, and they're also not going to be able to supply to the other community members that are not able to walk through the door, they don't have transportation, or they're afraid to walk through the door.
Okay. Fair enough.
We're going to do questions here.
Yeah.
Can I just ask a couple of questions? In this particular program, is testing required? So, if you walk through the door, before they give you syringes, if that's what happens, do they require you be tested for A, B, C, and HIV? Is it required?
It's not required. We don't have a set of state protocols. All the programs kind of operate independently, and it's really dependent on what they can actually offer to somebody.
Okay. So, if, if you don't track them from the beginning, how do you track them throughout the process of however long that takes, that they're in the program getting syringes? So, if you don't know somebody's positive, you can't keep them safe, and you can't keep the public safe. It seems like crucial information to me.
Yeah. And like I said, the state's only been supporting this for two years, so...
Can the programs, can the programs customize them? Can they say, okay, I'm going to take this $50,000, and I'm going to customize it so that we are going to test for A, B, and C hep? We're going to test for HIV. We're going to, and you'll have to test again after a few weeks to make sure that they're negative. And continue the testing throughout whatever time these people come to you?
Yeah. We give the programs complete freedom. And I guess, if you don't mind, Karen can share more on what their Health Department can actually offer, what their plan is.
For Dr. Morrison, I think one of the biggest things is that we're going to build relationships with these, the folks that come in through our doors. We, we're not going to say you have to get tested for all of these things. We're going to continue to encourage. We're going to continue to educate and be that support person there for them. And people do want to know. They honestly do want to know if they have HIV. We do a lot with the Sunrise Center right now, where we'll take our HIV kits there and do testing. They're asking for hepatitis C testing. We just recently got rapid hepatitis C testing from the state of Michigan. So, people want to know. They want to do the right thing. So, you know, if they're hesitant in the beginning because maybe they're, they're scared, you know, of what we're going to do, or if we're going to judge them, then the next time, or maybe the third time they come in, they'll start realizing we're there to help them.
Can you do the education without the exchange?
Yes. Absolutely. We're, we're going to educate them whether they're coming in and bringing us needles or not. We, we feel that that education's very, very important. And they may be very, very hesitant in the beginning because this is a new program. People may be very hesitant to, they, they might just want to kind of feel us out a little bit first. So, that's where we're going to work on relationship building and education.
You know, as a doctor, you don't require, you require things, and you bring in barriers, and you need to meet your patients essentially where they're at.
Okay. I don't want to, I'm sorry. I just don't want to get too much going on. I, I understand. So, we'll, and I do want to allow the right person to answer the counsel person's question as long as it just doesn't get too, too confusing. That led me to a quick question before I forget it, then if somebody else has some. There was a, there was an, an intake, it was like an intake questionnaire emailed to me from Jessica, maybe. Is that a requirement?
The intake form?
The intake form for the syringe program.
So, their initial visit, they will address all those questions. And one comment I wanted to make is, a lot of people don't know that Hep C can live outside the body for up to three weeks. And when you tell these people that, they don't know that either. And when I see their face, when you tell them, they're like white. Because they realize, you know...
Okay. And that will be digitized as well. So, part of organizing this at a state level is that we collect more comprehensive and concise data on what's going on around the state, and we continue to inform best practice, keep figuring out the best way to do this.
Sure. I don't know if anyone, any other questions for them? Okay.
I might have more, but...
All right. As we go. All right. Thank you. Thank you very much. All right. Next is a public safety presentation. I believe Chief Jett is doing that.
Right now, sweet spot. Anyway, so I might have to puke where my glasses are. Don't take offense, please. Good evening. A couple months ago, when I first spoke with Jessica from the Health Department about the program, I told her that I would fully support any effort involving education and alternative treatments for those engaged in IV drug use. And I still feel the same. I would add that thankfully, Opina currently has numerous programs available, and frankly, too many to list here tonight. But when the conversation turned to providing needles, I was very upfront about my concerns. I did, however, promise I would look into it further, and if there was truly compelling information to support it, then they would have a new recruit. I would convert. But as I read, and read that I did, it seemed that for every study that said it had its merits, there was another one that said it did not. And as we all know, data, especially percentages and other number-based information, is not always the most accurate and often does not reflect the true picture. So, I decided to focus my attention on other communities that allowed this type of activity, namely needle distribution, to see how it worked out for them. I figured their experience would be a good indication as to what to expect. Now, as I read about this issue, and it's been quite an education, I quickly learned, and some of this is being covered tonight, so I apologize, that the term service or syringe service program and needle exchange programs are often interchanged. However, they are not the same. A needle exchange program, as many of you may know, in theory, requires the user to return a dirty needle in order to receive a clean one. Based on my readings, my conversations and emails with representatives from the Health Department, they are not proposing a needle exchange program, a syringe service program, as was indicated earlier tonight. Reading from an email from Dr. Morrison, they will quote, "Supply new needles in an amount sufficient for their needs, depending on how many times a day they usually inject", unquote. Now, at the last council meeting, I had an opportunity to meet with Jessica out in the foyer, and she also explained that basically, it was in these terms, that if someone injects cocaine, and I believe Chakul kind of alluded to this also, they may have a greater need for needles than someone who injects heroin. So, it is on a as-needed basis. Again, this is not a one-for-one exchange, which I would still have my concerns, but at least you could argue that there would be some type of incentive for the return of, of dirty needles, and there might be some type of accountability. Further, as, further as with the program here, I cannot find one program anywhere where testing for hepatitis or HIV was mandated. Testing is offered, but not required. I cannot find one program where counseling or other forms of treatment were mandated. Again, they offered referrals, but again, nothing was required. Now, it is undeniable that cities across this nation, large and, pardon, large and small, and everything in between, whether they offer needles for exchanges or as a needed basis, that they have suffered consequences. In the interest of time, I'm only going to address a few, but these are well documented, and anyone can read about them if they wish. It was a simple Google search. We'll start with Seattle. Overwhelmed by the number of discarded needles despite having an exchange program, a program, community and neighborhood groups are now offering classes to residents on how to safely pick up and dispose of discarded needles in the neighborhoods. Albuquerque, New Mexico. There's a town who's got some real problems right now. I'll be reading apart from an article from the Albuquerque Journal, and it says in part, "One program that neighbors bring up repeatedly is failing to address their concerns is a needle exchange program run by Albuquerque Healthcare for the Homeless." If the exchange programs were successful, neighbors ask, "Why are there so many discarded syringes lying around, on the streets, in the park, in people's yards, and on the sidewalks?" Further, they wonder why participants are not mandated to enroll in treatment programs to wean themselves off drugs so that they no longer need the needles. It goes on that Jeanie, Jeanie Metzler, who's the executive director of the Albuquerque Healthcare for the Homeless, fully admits this is not about getting people off drugs, and furthermore, that it's not really an exchange program, even though, again, that's awfully intermixed. It is a syringe service program like the one being proposed here. Another report from AP News earlier this month, also in Albuquerque, an 11-year-old girl was practicing baseball sliding into home plate when a hypodermic needle pierced her foot. The girl was taken to a hospital and, quote, "will have to undergo further testing in three months to see if she was affected with anything", unquote. Coaches and volunteers have to walk the six baseball fields before any practice or games, and often find 20 to 30 syringes a day in each field. A coach said, quote, "The needle problem affects all the fields. We even find them in the dugout where the kids sit, under the bleachers where the parents and spectators sit, and there's one field in the west end, at the very back of the park, that we can no longer use because this is saturated with needles", unquote. San Francisco. I don't know where to begin or end with San Francisco right now. I don't think any of us can turn on the evening news, pick up a paper, or turn on the internet without seeing the problems that they're having. But their latest attempt to stem the dike, put the hole in the finger, is that they just budgeted another $1 million, $1 million, and I believe it's for an entire 10 people, because after all your administrative costs and so forth, it came down, they could hire 10 people for $1 million for one year for the sole purpose of walking around and picking up needles. That's all they do. Sioux St. Marie, Michigan, just north of us. A recent segment from 910 News showed with the melting snow, the alarming number of dirty needles that were still strewn about the area. This is despite the fact that there are four, four needle exchange sites in Chippewa County where Sioux St. Marie is at. So, they have four sites to take out the needles to exchange them, but yet, they're still discarded about the town. Charleston, West Virginia. Population roughly 47,000 people, not quite twice the size of Opina County. They had two needle exchange facilities. One alone was seeing roughly 400 people a day, and at its peak, handing out 50,000 needles a month. The last count was, over a two-year period, 651,000 needles were handed out over a two-year period. 651,000. And residents were more than just a little bit alarmed to find all the needles discarded around the area. They figure maybe, maybe 66% got returned, maybe. But in response to their concerns, an expert, and that was the term they used, an expert identified as Peter Davison from the University of California, San Diego. His response was that the needle litter is simply an annoyance. He went on to say, and again, I'll quote, "No one in the world has ever obtained HIV from stepping on a needle in the street. Needles on the street are a piece of trash. It's not something you want to see laying about in a gutter, but they're not actually a very hazardous object", unquote. a very hazardous object," unquote. That has to be one of the most absurd statements I've ever heard, or read in this case. If they're not hazardous, then why are we even talking about this? Of course, they are a hazard to the public health. That's why we're here tonight, to debate this, or to speak about this. According to the mayor of the town, "They," being the city, became, and again, these are his words, "became the hub of activity." A database from the city indicated participants were from 190 different zip codes. Now, this is a relatively small town, like I said, 47,000 people, middle West Virginia, and they have people from 190 different zip codes coming there. It comes, it reminds me of the Field of Dreams, most of you probably know the movie, right? If you build it, they will come, without a doubt. The mayor also talked about, and again, this is his word, how the crime rate skyrocketed. Again, his words, not mine. Which kind of leads me to the next point. Although the experts in the harm reduction movement deny it, crime is linked to drug activity. I know that's probably a shocking revelation for some, but it is true. Likewise, calls for EMS are linked to drug activity. You don't have to take my word for it. You don't have to. You can ask him, you can ask her, you can ask those two right there, you can ask Chief Forbush. I would invite you to speak with any first responder. I'm sure they'd be more than willing to give you their opinion on the topic. Because they are truly the real experts for this situation. They are the ones that deal with it on a regular basis, day in and day out. And another point of contention, and I was not really, I truly was not even going to touch this one, because it came up during the first presentation about a month ago, and it spoke about some of the principles of the harm reduction. And one of them was that they do not enable the drug user. And I just kind of, okay, we all have different opinions about what that might mean and so forth, pardon me. But I was doing my research on this project, and again, this has taken up a tremendous amount of time, which I don't mind, because it's worthwhile to look into it. But I kind of stumbled across a document, actually a manual. It is put out by the Harm Reduction Coalition, which is really what this whole other program is based on, correct? It's an eighty-page manual, available on the Internet, and is basically, is a how-to manual, how to inject illicit drugs. It's called "A Safety Manual for Injection Drug Users," and it's got the, I thought, quaint title of "Getting Off Right." As I thumb through this, I started to read initially my screen. And it's complete with pictures and diagrams. It shows you how to identify vein, how to tie off your arm so the vein pops just right. And then it goes in about, if you can't find sterile water, if you can't find sterile water to process your drugs, whether it be the heroin or the cocaine, that to find a toilet, and you can take the tank off the back of the toilet, because that water's cleaner than, don't use the bowl. They were very specific about that. Don't take water from the bowl of the toilet, take it from the back of the tank. That was when I set it down. I had read enough. So whether you call it enabling, supporting, condoning, if we approve this, I want to be very clear about this. If this is approved, at the very least, at the very least, we will be facilitating illegal drug activity. And I'm sorry, I have some tensions, but that is exactly what we would be doing. The city, for quite some time, almost, I think, thirty, thirty-one years, has supported our regional narcotics team, and they've had great success. And it is a battle. Every day, they're out there battling. If it wasn't for them, we would be up to our ears right now, in far more trouble. But we support them with money and manpower, and half of thirty years. And in my opinion, if we allow this, we would be actively undermining their mission in fighting the heroin, the meth, and the cocaine in our area. Also, like I said earlier, there are a number of treatment options available, and none of them involve giving out equipment to do illegal drugs. I'd like to thank what I've shared so far tonight, or maybe some valid points for you to consider, that there's a couple of things, consequences, I would call them, outcomes, that I really find a little bit more trouble. And strangely, no one has really seemed to kind of talk at any great length about these issues. So the first one is, there is, number one, no guarantee, absolutely no guarantee, that a needle obtained through this program will not be shared and result in someone getting infected with hepatitis or HIV. Now, to me, that is the definition of irony. If they were to obtain a needle from the Health Department and then got hepatitis, that would be unfortunate, but it, I mean, speak of the irony. But let me take it just one small step further, please. There is no guarantee that a needle obtained through this program, that someone will not use it to overdose and die. Now, that's a real threat that we face every day. And has anybody really thought of that? Has anybody thought this needle could kill somebody? And sadly, again, that is something, an experience that we see far, far too often. And I want you to think about this, in this term, for just a moment, please. If someone you knew was going through a dark period in their life, no matter what it is, and their life was in crisis, would you hand them a loaded gun, if they asked for one? Would you? I wouldn't. Would you say, would you put it on the table, would you slide it across the table and say, "There you go. Hope this works out for you. Good luck," knowing that there is a real chance that they could be dead? Maybe you'll see them next week, maybe you won't. Would you give them the gun? Despite the best intentions, despite best intentions, that needle, whether you obtain it legal or not, through a recognized program or not, could be the instrument of their death. Now, I'm not saying this for dramatic purposes. That is simply the facts. That is what we deal with. That is our world that we deal with. Now, it's easy to write a graph. It's easy to stand up here and point at a hard point with some stats and some graphs. But let me tell you what's hard, because we've done it too often. It's hard to contact a loved one, and say, "Your son, your daughter, your grandson, your granddaughter, maybe your mother or father, has died. Too often. So I say, for those who truly believe in this program, I would ask them to do one thing, and one thing only, and it's easy. I want you to put some type of identifying mark on that syringe. How hard can it be, right? Bar code. They can put on the side of it, "Distributed by Health Department," and number four. I don't care. But when we find them in our parks, because we will, when we find them in the street or in the alley behind your house, because we will, or more importantly, when we pull it out of somebody's arm, because we will. I want to know, I want to know who to contact right along with the next second, because that is the reality of what we are dealing with here. Now, some tonight might think maybe some of my comments are a bit harsh. Perhaps they are. But the truth sometimes can be harsh. I have no doubt, I'm going to skip over something, but I just want to go right to this. I have no doubt that the people who support this program have nothing but the best intentions. I don't doubt that for a moment. I think they're good people with enormous hearts that are also trying to do the right thing. I don't doubt that for a split second. And from a public safety point of view, it is our duty, our sworn duty, to protect all citizens, all citizens in our community, no matter what circumstances they are in or how they got there. It is the core of who we are and what we do as police, fire, and EMS. We are the shepherds looking over our flocks. You might hear that once in a while. That's how we view it, and we take that very personally. So at the end of the day, and I think Dr. Morrison, maybe the judge saw my notes earlier, because I'm going to say the same thing, we are not in opposition, as odd as that may sound right now, if you may be hearing me, but we truly are not in opposition. I believe that everybody here wants the same thing. I do, and that is the best for this community. But no matter how good the intentions are, no matter how good they are, there have been, and there will be, consequences. This has been repeatedly shown, and it's undeniable. Again, you can read about it all you want. It is undeniable. So as your chief, as your chief, I am asking you, I am begging you, please do not do this. That's all I have. Chief Forbush is also here. If you had any questions, I know Captain Marso, he's our community risk reduction officer. If you have any questions with them, I think I know what their points are going to be. And obviously, if you have any questions for me, I'll be more than happy to answer them if I can.
All right. Thank you, Chief.
Any questions, sir?
Any questions right off? Not right off, I do not.
All right, thank you.
So with these presentations, and the one we had two meetings ago, we are now left with an ordinance amendment, draft ordinance 19447, that I believe Bill wrote. Do you want to read, do you want to read and explain what the differences are in the way that the ordinance was, and the way that you have it written?
Yeah, I can do that. Let me just look back, Rob. The city currently has an ordinance 54-6 that is labeled "Trafficking in, possession, or use of paraphernalia," excuse me, "used with controlled substances." There are several sections to it. There's a definition section that defines what paraphernalia is, it goes on to restrict the use of it, but specifically, what this proposed ordinance looks at is section number four, which would allow, in this particular matter, the District Health Department to distribute their syringes. And there is also a state statute, it's statute number 333.7457. And what that does is, it says that, as to these particular subsections, that 333.7451 to 333.7455, which is the state's drug paraphernalia statute, that 7457 says it doesn't apply to the following groups. And specifically, F says, "An object sold, offered for sale, or given away by a state or local governmental agency, or by a person specifically authorized by a state or local governmental agency to prevent the transmission of infectious agents." And that is the portion of the state statute that allows the District Health Department, number four in this case, to distribute these. However, the city ordinance doesn't allow that currently. So the proposal from the District for Health Department was for us to consider amending our ordinance that would allow that to occur within the city limits. And so the ordinance that I've drafted essentially takes section number four, our current section number four, which says that the possession, manufacture, or sale of drug paraphernalia does not apply to manufacturers, practitioners, pharmacists, owners of pharmacies, and other persons who conduct it in accordance with the state law. So essentially, although we have a drug paraphernalia law, there's a state drug paraphernalia law, obviously pharmacists are able to distribute syringes to people for whatever particular substance they need to ingest. I mean, the most common one that everybody knows of is obviously insulin, okay? But there are other drugs that are used intermittently that are prescribed. And so our ordinance exempts those people from being subject to prosecution. So this amended proposed ordinance would allow the District Health Department to be one of those persons that can distribute syringes to help stem any further spread of infectious agents or diseases pursuant to the amendment to state law. So that's, that's the background that we're coming, or I'm coming to you with, and proposing this amendment based on what was suggested at the, it would have been the July 1st meeting, but what was suggested at the, whatever the second meeting in June was, I can't remember the date off the top of my head. So with that being said, I'll go ahead and read this. "This is an ordinance of the City of Opina, Michigan, amending Chapter 54, offenses and miscellaneous provisions, Article 1, in general, Section 54.6, trafficking in, possession, or use of paraphernalia used with controlled substances by amending Section C, possession, manufacturing, sale of drug paraphernalia, Subparagraph 4. Being ordained by the Municipal Council of the City of Opina, State of Michigan, as follows. Section 54.6, trafficking in, possession, or use of paraphernalia used with controlled substances. Section C shall be amended as follows. Number 4 will now state, 'This section does not apply to manufacturers, practitioners, pharmacies, owners of pharmacies, and other persons whose conduct is in accordance with state law, or by a state or local governmental agency, or by a person specifically authorized by a state or local governmental agency to prevent the transmission of infectious agents.'" The section after that, or the statement after that, "This section shall not be construed to prohibit any possession, manufacture, or use of hypodermics made unlawful by city ordinance," is what our ordinance currently says. So the change would be state or local governmental agency, or a person specifically authorized by a state or local governmental agency, and specifically for the purpose of preventing the transmission of infectious agents. The provisions of this ordinance shall take effect ten days after being adopted by the Municipal Council and duly published. This is only the first reading, so obviously, any discussion council wants to have would occur at this meeting. And then, second, if council wishes to direct me to do something different than this, then when brought back for second reading, that's where we'd be. You'd have, you'd have to go down it at that point.
All right, thank you, Bill. All right, thank you, Bill. So if anybody, everyone understands that, provide some discussion now to give Bill some direction on what he will do at our next meeting. I will start, I guess. I want everything that has been presented to us this evening, the counseling, the care, the nonjudgmental, the treatment, the trusted relationships, certainly the treatment for addicts and a way for them to receive it. I do not want a syringe service program. I do not want to give away syringes. And I won't go into complete detail. I just don't honestly think that it's a good idea. I think the state has got to come up with something better. The state of Michigan, if they're behind this program, it is my personal belief that they need to come up with something better to get all of those other things that I want, and it seems like everybody else in the room wants. There has to be something better than giving away needles. And so I don't support amending the ordinance as of right now. But to Judge LaCrosse's comments, I'm very interested in October 19th and what that might bring. I certainly have an open mind to how that day will come. But right now, today, and more than likely two weeks from now at our next meeting, I'm not supporting changing our ordinance. So I will leave it open to anyone else that has comments as well.
We'll just go down the line, I guess. Bill, I have a question. If we amend our ordinance, that will open the door to allow any other state agencies to be able to distribute needles. It's not just the health department, correct?
True. It'd have to be any other state or local governmental agency, yeah.
I just wanted to be clear. Because I've done a lot of research on this. Though getting into too much, I think that we've all been affected in some fashion by mental health, by family members, close family members who have had addiction, no matter what their choice is of use. I cannot, I cannot, I just simply cannot support a needle program. I can support everything that Matt said, the education, eliminating the stigma that goes with it. And having to deal with all of these things in my life, and I have, I understand every single aspect of mental health and addiction. I do. I get it. I get the struggles they have. I get the struggles the families have. But to give somebody a needle, I can't. I just cannot do that. I think that what we need to do as a community, as a state, as people, we need to have beds available for these people. That's one of the biggest problems when addicts are looking for help is there's no beds for them. There's no funding for that. Mental health issues with kids who are coming up, who will have these addictions. If we don't help them when they're young, they will be addicts. We need to catch them before they are. So I think we need a more comprehensive view on how we look at this. But I cannot. I can tell you, I cannot give somebody a needle. I think, and I've done research, the Centers for Disease Control says that the biggest group of people who are likely to have hepatitis C are baby boomers, even now, because they don't know they've had it. We didn't do testing when, for screening for, in the blood pool before the early 90s. We didn't do it. So there's lots of people out there, even today, who have hepatitis C, who have no symptoms. And their bodies, some of them can cure it, some of them can't. But some of them can, and they don't know they have it until they're in crisis. And then it's too late. But so those cases are clumped in with all the other numbers that come up when they talk about numbers. Because you can't really say that this person has hepatitis C because they use needles. And you can't say that they don't. Because you just don't know that that is not there. But that's where I fall on this. I'm all for helping people. I'm as liberal as they come. I take care of animals and feed hungry kids and want a green earth. But I cannot give someone a needle. I just can't. I just can't do it. But we do need solutions to this problem. And giving a needle isn't it.
I would echo everything Matt and Cindy have said. I could hardly sit here and listen to the three-generation story of a grandmother who taught their grandchild use needles, or injected grandchild. What do you think we are doing if we go for this? What is the difference if we do this? It is, in my mind, no different, except we're looking at every child in the community and saying, "Go get a clean needle, it'll be okay." I just, I'm not a stupid person, but, and I have, I come from the world of prevention. I love children. I was the executive director of the Boys and Girls Club for 15 years. And I cannot, in good conscience, vote for anything that would allow and enable a grandmother, I'm a grandmother too, to inject her grandchild or teach her grandchild. Now, I know this doesn't, what I think, doesn't get in front of anybody. But it doesn't support anybody either who would do things like that. I understand addiction to a certain extent. I truly do. And my heart goes out to the people in my family who I know have a struggle with alcoholism. It does. I love them. I love them as much as I ever have. But it's still not my job to enable them. I'm still not going to buy them a six-pack. And I'm still not going to furnish a needle. And so, no, I will not ever vote for anything like this for our community.
I think any one of us who's set up here would do whatever we could to educate, to prevent, to do whatever we could to help reduce, you know, drug use in our community. Every one of us would, you know. And I, like the chief, came into this with a very strong, open mind. You know, and after doing my research on the programs and understanding exactly how they've worked and where they've had success. But overall, the success just hasn't been there. So I, without going into details that have already been presented here, I mirror what the mayor has found. I mirror what our chief has presented. The additional consequences are out there. And I agree with the fact for every study that says it helps. You know, there's just as many that says it did not improve. It only caused, pardon me, caused other issues. So I too will not be able to support this program in our community.
I want to start, I want to read a little letter that was submitted for consideration. And I think it should be shared. "To whom may concern, I'm writing this letter to ask the city council to approve a prevention project, syringe service program for Alpena County. I am a mother of a son that is an addict. I've had many conversations with my son concerning his addiction issues. I remember one of the conversations we had about the use of dirty needles. He stated that while he was at one of his darkest times, that he did use needles and he had many concerns and diseases that he may have contracted because of not being able to get any new needles. There are many concerns that I do have based on my experience with loved ones and clients that I have been in contact with about where and how they can obtain needles that would be safe. I feel that any and all preventive programs that can help anyone with addiction would help our community as a whole. I hope that all aspects will be considered and this program will be allowed in Alpena city limits. Thank you for your time." Donna Davis. I wanted to start with that. And I am not going to mirror what everyone else has set up here because I feel that the public health aspect of it and prevention of disease is a huge and important factor and should not just be discounted because some of the other concerns. Chief Jett said, he was going to say some harsh things. Well, addiction is harsh, and we all want to help. It's been established. But what would we do different? Because I think everyone has acknowledged on all sides that there's an addiction crisis. That's why there's going to be a conference in our community for it. That's why drug court, drug court is different than what has been known in the past. Because addiction is an illness, not a crime. So drug court's been successful. What will we do differently moving forward to protect public health and also to be an avenue for people to get more treatment? Because it sounds like, and I don't think Chief Jett countered this idea, that people that are in these programs are more likely to seek treatment. And that goes back to perhaps crime is linked to drug activity. I'm not going to argue that that might be the case. But the more people that seek treatment, then the healthier the community is going to be. Those individuals, the entire community. You know, and I'm going to go to the needle part. A needle is a vessel. It's a liquor bottle. It's not the drug. People are going to use it if they're addicted regardless of what the vessel is. And having a clean vessel is the issue here. Saying, "We're going to give you something so you don't get more sick. You're already sick." This is something that's going to maybe keep a huge health crisis because there's not even addicts that are affected. The majority of these diseases can be contracted sexually as well. And a lot of people have people in their lives, partners, that are affected and infected because people in their lives haven't faced their addiction issues, haven't gotten help. So it's not just the people that have the addiction themselves. It's an effect, as we saw in that map, it spreads. It's not just the addicts themselves that are contracting these diseases that have a huge impact on public health and on our healthcare system, which is already overly taxed, as we know. So those are my thoughts, and I would be in support of this program. I think the public health factor. And along with the huge aspect that Donna mentioned in her letter, that if it helps lead more people to treatment, then right there, it's going to be healthier for our whole community. Those are my thoughts, so. I want to add too, that Hunt, Chief Judge focused on Hunt, and he mentioned that. And I appreciate their work, but most of what, when we see things, they're focusing on the traffickers, the producers of the drugs, not the users themselves. It's the ones that have the addiction. And because, you know, you can't arrest your way out of, like as someone said, the issue or the crisis. So what do we do different? And so I'm discouraged, I guess, that so much against a program that could really help in different ways. I respect everyone's opinions and where they came from, but those are mine. And other people have reached out to the community as well in support of it, so.
That's what makes this council working. And yeah, I'll note that we did get several letters that were put into our packet. So if anyone is wondering whether we got their letter, if it came through the clerk's office or was emailed directly to us, we did. And I don't doubt, I don't doubt for a minute that this program didn't help Brandon. He stood right here and told us that it did. I don't doubt that, that it helps stop the spread of HIV and hepatitis to some extent. I can't doubt that because it's going to. It's just, for me, I can't think of the term, but when you have, but it happens in areas when you have something that's, like an animal or an insect that you don't want anymore, and so some, so you find something that's a predator to that, and then you bring it in. And so you say, okay, it's going to eradicate or help eradicate what you have that you don't want anymore. But then five, 10 years later, you look and you're like, oh, no, now we have
Something worse.
The predator. And that can't, I just can't get that out of my mind with the needles because we, I don't doubt that it's, that a clean needle, as illustrated in the letter, is going to help an addicted person. There's no doubt whatsoever. But I get a lot of Facebook, I get a lot of emails, I get a lot of social media about the needles that are in our dog park and they're allegedly by the splash park. I haven't seen any there, but under the bridges. So that clean needle goes to that person that got it. But it's that dirty needle that Joel's guys are going to find, Chief's guys are going to find. Our recycling resource director sent us an email with a photo of what he found sticking out of his glove. And so those are just some huge concerns that I have. So I rambled a bit, but we've all kind of set our piece. I don't know if we want to bring this back for a vote. I guess we're obligated to because you had first reading. So this will come to a clear vote on this ordinance at our next meeting.
Yes.
Until then. So next up is new business. We have the capital project changes for La Forest Street and Oliver Street. Shifting gears.
Yeah.
Sorry about that. It's just kind of how the agenda works.
The current budget includes Oliver Street, the Oliver Street project, which involves the installation of water and sewer infrastructure from La Forest Avenue to Fourth Avenue. Let me just back up and give you a little bit of history. What we're doing right now, I think everybody knows that that 24-inch main goes up Ripley. We've had a number of breaks and failures in that. What we're looking to do is putting a parallel one in up Oliver. 24-inch main so that we can, we have a break, we have an alternate feed source. Or if we need to, we can take that 24 out of service and rely on the one on Oliver Street. But what we did, and I did, in the CIP, in the capital improvement planning process, I reversed the order. I got Oliver Street ahead of La Forest. What I need to do is build that section of La Forest Street from Ripley to Oliver so that I can build the 24-inch up there. So I'm going to upgrade that. So what I did is, like I said, I got them out of sequence. And there's about $600,000 established for the Oliver Street project. And as we began the design, started looking, I said, hey, timeout. We've got to back up here. We reversed the projects. And the La Forest project needs to run from Ripley to Oliver and build the supporting infrastructure for the Oliver Street project. The project is programmed in the capital improvement plan at $200,000. And it was a following, the following year, so it would be 2021 fiscal years what that is targeted for. This memo also kind of goes in conjunction with the next one, which we'll get into in Maple Street. But Maple Street, the bids came in over our allocated funding for that. So what we would do is we would take this $400,000 roughly that we wouldn't be using for Oliver Street, use a portion of that to pay for the additional costs on Maple Street. And then, if sufficient funding, I may try to turn the corner on Oliver and do one block of Oliver Street. That's kind of what that last paragraph is saying, is that we want to use all the funding. We're going to build Maple Street. And Maple Street is this year, is this fall construction. But we would then look at the available funding in our design and design it so that we could go up Oliver Street, go across La Forest from Ripley to Oliver and up one block on Oliver to start that Oliver project if funding is available. So basically, right now, I'm asking council's authorization to swap those two projects.
I think that's what, that was easy.
Okay.
Any questions? I have none.
You don't?
No, actually.
But you're still doing La Forest?
Yes.
So that part's going.
Yes, we need to do La Forest. And that would be spring of '20 construction.
No questions?
I have no questions.
I don't have any now either. I did.
I move that we alter the city budget to allow the La Forest Street project to move forward ahead of the Oliver Street project.
Set it.
Nielsen?
Yes.
Noah?
Yes.
Walagora?
House?
Yes.
And Johnson?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Yes.
And Johnson?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Also, I'm, I'm sorry, jumped in there ahead of you.
Oh, I was just going to introduce you. 2019 Capital Improvement Project Phase Two bid recommendation.
On June 11, 2019, the city received an open bid for 2019 Capital Improvement Project Phase Two. The project includes the installation of water and sewer utilities, excavation and installation of subways, curb and gutter, hot mixed asphalt paving and slope restoration on Maple Street between Third Avenue and Washington Avenue. Bid documents were sent to 10 firms and planned rooms and also posted on the city's website, with two bids received as follows. MacArthur Construction out of Hellman, $666,288. Elmer's Crane and Dozer out of Alpena, $730,973.50. Funding has been established with $250,000 in the water fund and $250,000 in the sewer fund for this project. The asked tabulated prices are below the engineer's estimate, but above the budgeted funding level. Engineering Department has reviewed unit prices for the bids received and has seen no anomalies in these unit prices compared to what we've been seeing from our other bids. We didn't see anything that stuck out as abnormal. And the engineering department, via a separate memo, is suggesting a project swap, La Forest Street and Oliver Street, for reasons outlining that memorandum. With the swap occurring, the funding needed for the above, or funding needed above that which is budgeted would be available for this project. It is my recommendation as city engineer that the project be awarded to MacArthur Construction for the asked tabulated bid unit prices totaling $666,288.
Okay, just clarifying, okay? The unit prices, as you speak of them, are the per foot unit prices?
Per linear foot for concrete, for asphalt.
Okay, and those all came in with all the current projects that you have going? Okay, so how did we miss $166,000?
This was, and it was one of those things where we kept carrying this project forward from previous years, we did not update the prices in it. And that's something that checklist, that will be, that we always update our prices in advance now.
How long have we, I'm sorry to interrupt, Rich. How long have we had to push this one back? Has it been four years? Did I have that right?
I think it's longer than that.
Is it? Okay, because I saw where it was pushed back a long time.
It's kind of like Merchant Street. It hasn't been quite that long, 42 years.
Or Ontario Street, but we're actually going to do this here.
Okay.
Yeah, this is a project, and it's those, you know, due to funding, costs, et cetera, we just have to keep pushing them back.
Yeah, yeah, I get that.
These are, oh, I'm sorry, but these are, these street projects date back to when, when we had the detours in that Sam Eiler was always, had issues with. So, if that gives you a bit of a reference.
I'm looking at capital projects going, "I think this one was here."
I mean, it has been gone for a decade or anything. Not suggesting that it's out, but it's been gone for a little bit. I don't have any questions on this one.
No, with that explanation, do we have something in where we can make sure that we don't have this again, Rich, where it's every year? Okay, thank you, just to make sure going forward.
And I, you know, sometimes we do miss them, we do miss them, but usually our traffic records have been fairly, fairly good.
When I quit making mistakes, then I'll start complaining about others, so I don't.
No, after the vote, just after the vote, I'd like to, to one other thing, even though it's not on the agenda, but I think it would be valuable to do for everybody.
I move we approve the project known as Phase Two, awarded to MacArthur Construction for $666,288,000.
Noah?
Yes.
Walagura?
Aye.
Hoss?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
And Nielsen?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Rich, would you just want to give an update about Park Place in terms of where that is and how, with Brown Trail coming up here at the end of the week, what's going on, so everybody has an idea?
Yeah. Actually, the curb went in at the end of last week, and they had to let it set for a number of days before they put that, the aggregate up against the current. The aggregate was going in today and being graded and shaped. It would be final graded tomorrow, and right now, weather holding. Well, we plan on putting the base course of asphalt in on Thursday, or actually, on Wednesday, on that end of the project. We have a water tie-in that we have to do up at the intersection of Second and, or First and Park. That, we were going to do Thursday, and it'll be based in that same day. So, and then we're going to basically step away. The hopes to also have all the restoration work done. We're going to step away for a week and let it go. There is some rumblings out there about trying to top it, but I don't want to, I'm very cautious about that, because I've got to, I've got to adjust all the manhole structures up, and I don't want to take a chance on having it torn up or those manholes raised up and having it set for a couple of days during Brown Trail. So, I'm going to push them off and just let them, leave it based in, but it'll be hard-surfaced, the entire leg to be hard-surfaced.
And does that, does that allow traffic flow?
Yeah.
So, that it'll allow traffic?
It'll be like the first section, right here, that is paved. It'll be down, you know, inch and a quarter on the curb line, but all the driveways will be open.
Was it saying, the one, not only the first parking lot, which is half-open, but the next one, that will also be open?
I was guaranteed that all the driveways would be open before the weekend.
Sorry about shoving that in, but I thought he was up here.
That's okay, maybe nervous for a minute.
I was thinking the same thing, how I sneak it in.
No, I appreciate that. This really hadn't crossed my mind, so. All right, next up is a resolution for dialer ride millage ballot language for November 5, 2019 election. Adam.
Today I stand before you a little different hat on. Today, I'm Thunder Bay Transportation Authority Board President and the city representative on that board. August of 2006, the city of Alpena entered into an agreement with the Thunder Bay Transportation Authority, TBTA, to maintain public transportation services within the city, both TBTA and Dial Ride, or DART, for both of those. In particular, the following were agreed on by both parties. The city will provide to TBTA the full amount of the millage as approved and levied by the city for the purpose of providing demand response public transportation services within the current, already amended, DART service area. TBTA and the city will review the millage rate to determine the continued need for the millage and the proposed rate, and if the millage is determined to be necessary for the continued effective and efficient operation of the service, the city will place a millage proposal on the ballot. Third, TBTA will operate routes and provide service that are conducive to the transportation needs of city residents and maintain system hours and fare structure within the service area that will be, with that word effect, during the time of that agreement. The current four-year DART operating millage of .65, levied by the city, expires this year. For the current year, it's estimated that the millage will generate approximately $150,000 for the authority. These funds may be used, may only be used to support the operation of DART and amount to approximately 15% of the overall DART operating budget. The fare structure has remained at the level in effect at this time of the TBTA-DART merger at $1.50 for a full fare and $0.75 for children, senior, and disabled. State and federal funding equates about 56% of the operating budget, while the fare box generates only 8% of the system's revenue, leaving a shortfall of 21%. The maintenance of the DART system has long been viewed as a quality of life issue with the general citizenry and the electorate of the city. Consequently, support for the millage has been historically, or historically been considered more important than increase in fares, as an increase in fares would impact those who most desperately need the service. But we have limited, we do have limited resources to absorb fare, or those people will have limited resources to absorb any fare increases. Due to increases in the operating expenses and reduction in the revenue from other sources, we do feel the need to ask for an increase in the millage by raising the millage to, from .65 to 1 mil. It is estimated this increase would bring the $243,215, which is an increase of $93,215. This would help raise the percentage of, to 25% of DART's operating expenses, leaving a gap of 11%, which is much more manageable. On the average household value of $100,000 with taxable value of $50,000, this would cost a taxpayer roughly $50 a year, an increase of $17.50 per year from the current millage. Since 2007, DART has seen ridership increase by over 35%. In the 2018 fiscal year, 91,726 passengers were served. Of this ridership, about 80% are city residents and 3/4 are reduced fare riders. For the current fiscal year, 66,202 passengers have been transported so far, and it's projected the total ridership this year is expected to be approximately 90,000 fares. Since 1975, there have been 11 DART millage requests, all of which have been overwhelmingly approved by the Alpena electorate, a clear reflection of the value the community has placed on DART and the service it provides. Once again, TBTA respectfully requests that council support Dial Ride, support Dial Ride by the placement of a four-year millage and increase the rate to 1 mil per year on the November 5, 2019, general election ballot by the adoption of the attached resolution 2019-15. And if there are any technical questions, the general manager, Andrew Sundin, is over there as well, so I would be happy to answer any questions.
So, this is just a request from us to put that on the ballot, correct?
We do have to do that, and we, whenever it expires, we have to get your permission to do that.
Okay. I don't have any questions, and I support that.
I support it as well, so.
I move we adopt resolution number 2019-15.
Second.
Walagura?
Aye.
Hoss?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Nielsen?
Yes.
And Noah?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Next up is the amendments to the TBTA Articles of Incorporation.
Absolutely, thank you. In 2006, Thunder Bay Transportation Authority was created, the founding members of the city of Alpena, Alpena County, Alcona County, and Mount Morissette County. At this time of creation, the Articles of Incorporation bylaws were drafted. In order for the articles to be amended, there needs to be a vote of the founding entities of its approval. I'll try to summarize this next part, but since it's been created, there's been some changes. We've moved locations, so the address needs to be changed in the articles, as well as there have been some wording changes we are proposing. The original articles mention that the additional board members, which are representative of the intermediate school district, the senior and handicapper population, and the regional medical facility, and human service agency. We are proposing, instead of the ISD, to have the membership be representative of education, instead of the term handicapper, to replace that with disabled-vulnerable. And then, instead of the regional medical facility, we would like to have a representative from healthcare, which gives us a little broader selection for board members. And then, add the term of and/or a community agency, which gives us a little more leeway when looking for potential board members in the future.
Just a little history, since I was on the board and the president at the time we became an authority and all this happened, is, in hindsight, not a good idea, but we did, because, for whatever reason, is that we looked at what our composition was then, and so this was kind of tailored around that. Obviously, in the years, the composition has changed, and so what we, the board doesn't want to be is so specific to say it has to be the hospital. That has been difficult. I think Andrew said that you had a new representative from the hospital, and then he took her job somewhere else, and so he was only on the board a few months. And so, it becomes really difficult when you start putting it for specific entities. So, by making it broader, it gives more flexibility in terms of finding candidates. And this has to be approved by all four of the founding members of the authority, which is the city of Alpena, and then the three counties, Alpena, Alcona, and Mount Morissette. So, they'll be going before each of those boards as well to ask for that approval.
I was going to ask if we were first or last, but.
I think you're first.
I don't have any questions or issues whatsoever. Does anybody have anything for Adam?
Nothing, nothing on this one. I move that we approve the Thunder Bay Articles of Incorporation amendments as presented.
I'll give it to Cindy.
Yeah, Tiger was the runner.
Hoss?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Nielsen?
Yes.
Noah?
Yes.
Walagura?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Well, nice to see this.